Groundwork, so we've had a situation due to a series of incidents and accidents and drought being one of them, which has caused us to have a high demand of water and a lower supply than we would like to have. And so today, we're here to consider an ordinance that was introduced at the last meeting. And let me go ahead and ask you that, clerks. I believe that there have been some material changes to this ordinance prior to tonight's meeting, so I think that we probably should reintroduce that ordinance.
And then you'll have to motion for immediate consideration.
Yeah, if we want to vote on immediate consideration. So if I can, before we talk about it, can I just have someone introduce the ordinance?
Introduce the ordinance.
Okay, ordinance has been introduced. So what I'd like to do is just kind of walk you through some of the highlights. Well, actually, I'm going to have Mr. Jay Whitman here from Water Department come forward. In just a few minutes, I'm going to let Jay get here because he needs to hear what you have to say. We're going to let Jay walk us through what's brought us to this point, where we're at now, where we're going, what's being done right now to mitigate the circumstances that we're under. And then I would like to, and I won't go through every word in here verbatim, but point out just a few things that I see that may have been some slight changes from the copy we were given Monday evening, and then just some things that I saw that might be some points of discussion or it may not be points of discussion. So with that, let's go ahead and get started. Jay, if you'll come forward and kind of tell us what's brought us to this point.
Good afternoon. Sorry we've gotten to this point. We started two weeks ago pumping about 6.9 million, steadily inclining. We were looking for April showers to bring May flowers. They never came.
Is that mic on, Jay?
It's got a green light.
Okay.
Test.
It's getting closer.
Okay, all right. So we were experiencing quite a bit more use. Just for instance, we ran the numbers from January 2019 to April 2019, and then compared it to this year, same timeframe. We pumped 60 more million gallons in the same timeframe. So we got together and started looking at, you know, ways to conserve and talking to the, you know, Mike Allison and others about getting a conservation plan together that we thought was already done. So this weekend, right before the weekend, we were pumping about 7.5 million gallons. We were still fine. Our capacity was still fine, which is the problem. We're low on capacity. We had a main break this weekend. It was a large main. Not only when they break do we lose water, but for about six to seven hours, we had to flush. There's like three or four hydras going wide open. I came in Sunday and looked at it. We looked at the scale, my chief water operator and I did. We talked back and forth, and we felt like we would recover because that's what we do at night. We recover at night. And so when we came in Monday morning, we had not recovered, but about maybe a foot. And we were low. And so we started troubleshooting the system, and we found that one of our primary wells, well eight, was only pumping at about 50% capacity. And then we noticed a very low vibration in it. The only good news, the only silver lining to that is it was already scheduled to be replaced starting Wednesday of this week. So we were going to limp through. We got the conservation plan. I'm sorry I wasn't here. I'm completely apologetic about not being here Monday night to explain this to you. So Tuesday morning, we woke up and it was even worse. You know, we started tweaking the system. We went out and checked well eight again. It was roaring at that point. I made the determination we need to take it offline. It was only at about 20% anyway. And the problem is if it came apart, the job would be much more difficult and take a lot more time. So we took it offline, and it stays offline. Today, we came in, we had a lot of calls throughout town. And then on top of everything else, a pole got hit on Gayford Avenue. It took out well six. We were offline one hour and two minutes, I think is what I saw. We lost seven PSI on the south side of Thomas Hospital. Excuse me, I have allergies real bad and my voice is going. So we lost seven PSI at Thomas Hospital in just one hour. When we came back online, we did gain that. The good news is, is the pressure is holding, but I've never seen it this low in the 17 years I've been here. And I've been through three hurricanes now. We're down to 29.5 feet, I think. We're still holding a good, you know, the pressure's still good, but we're not refilling at night. We've lost our ability to refill. Well eight can do 850,000 gallons per day. I hope it's back online this weekend or Monday at the latest, and, you know, we can start recovering quickly at that point. But we're not going to recover at this point. We're only going to get worse if we don't, you know, enact at least this irrigation ban. And I'll take your questions.
I got several for you, Jay. Why can't we fill at night?
Because I don't have enough capacity with well eight off the line to bring it up fast enough.
You don't have any capacity? You don't have anywhere to put it, then?
I have, I'm sorry, I didn't say right. I don't have enough, the wells can't refill those tanks fast enough because they're so low. And if they're only a few feet low, I might start catching up over time. But as soon as I catch up a foot or two at night, like I can catch up about a foot and a half without eight being online, but as soon as I catch that up, I lose it in the first two hours.
Okay, so let me be honest with you. So you're trying to fill at night?
Oh, yes.
You just can't physically fill it?
Right.
It's not that you're not trying and water's going in, it's just that water's going out as the rate is coming in, roughly?
We've gone to two wells, and we've manipulated the settings so that those service pumps never shut off. And the service pumps fill the system and also fill our tanks.
Okay.
Now, well one and well two, I don't want to get too deep in the weeds, but well one and well two, we pump directly into those tanks. And then well five, six, and three, we pump directly into the system. But once the system's full, we start backfilling into those tanks. We never get full enough.
I got you.
So well eight is down at well, well eight is down at Treatment Plant One. And that's the major contributor to refilling some of these tanks, and this is not happening.
So let me, two more questions, and I think that everybody up here is interested in the answers to these. So we had a, we had a main break.
Right.
That's been repaired, right?
Yes.
And we had well six go down due to an auto accident, and that, for an hour and two minutes, and that's been repaired.
Yes.
So what is the demand to capacity today?
We're over 8 million gallons demand every day right now. Yeah.
So what is that as a percentage?
So I would say with well eight off the line, that's 100%.
I wear it 100% right now?
Yeah.
Okay. And then well eight, when it comes back online, possibly by the end of the weekend, what will we be at at that point in time?
We'll be back to 9.1 to 9.2. And I, you know, I'm pretty comfortable with that.
What is that?
That's about maximum.
Is that 90%?
That's 100%. 9.1, 9.2. We'll be back to being able to produce 9.1 to 9.2 million gallons per day. And we would think that as long as we can recover at night, you know, you can irrigate. But if we're over 8 million, it's just slow to, it's slow to recover.
But if we're at 100% today and we get well back, well eight back online, we're still going to be at 100%?
No, I'm sorry. We'll be at about 90%.
Right.
All right. The 100% of our capacity is 9.1, and that'll bring us, eight will bring us back to that.
Okay, so we'd be at 90%? And you'd think that's just due to, and then so that is due to drought, then?
Oh, absolutely.
What's remaining is due to drought?
Yeah, this is what we normally see in August. I said before you guys with Richard Peterson last August, and we talked about this. We thought, when I took over this job two years ago, excuse me, we thought that our capacity was right at 10. You know, my experience being here this time, I told you then, I thought it'd be about 9.1, 9.2. We were about 8, 9. We actually hit 9.1 two or three times last year. We never got in any trouble because we had the capacity. We were able to refill it at night. But we do not have 10 million gallons per day capacity. We have an engineer firm that's going to come to you in a couple of weeks. This is all just coincidental, that's going to lay out a plan for us to move forward in the future. It doesn't help us right now, but we'll know exactly where we're at. But I called them, and they believe that 9.2 is about all we can do with everything working properly.
So just for background information, so the engineering company that'll come in next week and start talking about plans for the future will increase capacity proposed by how much? 1 million, 2 million, 3 million?
Yes, I hope it's between 1 and 1.5 the short term.
Because if it was, say, 1, and we're at 90% capacity, and it sounds like our capacity's roughly 10 million gallons, 1 will knock the 90. You say we're at 9, 9.2, that'll make us to 8.1, 8.2. Sounds like we almost would always be perpetually in an 80% capacity state.
Yeah, you know, there's going to be some short-term solutions that'll get us up, and there's going to be some long-term solutions presented to you. But keep in mind, if I wanted to sink a well tomorrow, it's a long process. The first thing you do is get a permit to put a test site down, and then once a test site produces good water, then you have to go back to the state and get it permitted, and then you have to build it. And, you know, one of the things that they're going to suggest to you, I already know, is to upsize the line coming from Treatment Plant Three on County Road 33 to bring it back to Fairhope Avenue. Right now, that's an eight-inch line. They think that we can get over 1,000 gallons a day back in addition to what we already have without sinking any more wells. 1,000 gallons, I don't have my calculator right for me. 1,000 gallons times 1440, which is how many minutes in the bay, that's what we would get. He thinks it's a little bit more.
1.44 million.
But that's what we would hope. On a short term, that's the easiest thing. We wouldn't need any permitting for that. We would just need the time and money to get it done.
Yeah, that'd give us almost, that'd give us 14% capacity right there?
Right, right, right. And that's, that would be, you know, my advice to go forward as quick as possible, but, you know, that's a future thing. We're living in the, right now.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Jay as, from what he's told us so far? Like I said, I'm going to go kind of step through some of the high points of this, and then we can direct some questions to Jay or whomever, maybe Marcus on some of these things. And then we need to discuss with each other. But does anybody have any questions related to what he just said?
I've got a couple, I guess. Just based on your assessment of where we are right now, if we were to pass the ordinance or adopt the ordinance as is, will we immediately go into Phase Three?
That's what I recommend, and that's what I continue to recommend, because, like I said, we're in uncharted territories. I've never seen it this low, and I'm worried that if we don't start recovering soon, it's not just our customers, you know, not having the ability to take, you know, strong showers and stuff. But I'm, you know, my main concern is, you know, our fire protection's going to be degraded. And so, yes, I'm going to ask you for that. And I think 48 to 72 hours, I think that we would see some relief. But it's not going to happen automatically. You know, if they shut off all the irrigations tomorrow, it's going to take us 48 to 72 hours to get back to about 37, 38 feet in the tank, and that's where we need to be to start feeling comfortable about where we're at.
But to follow up on that.
Sure.
With something that Council President said just a second ago, it sounds like until we had another well or improved well, that even if those efforts were successful, we would roll back to Phase One, and we would be kind of stuck at that 80% number until we had additional.
Right. Well, you don't, listen, the point of the resolution for me, or the ordinance, was to have the opportunity to ask for that. Now, if everything's going well, I've never asked for it, and I wouldn't ask for it. You know, we would ask people to conserve. We do that now. But, you know, I'm not going to, I'm not going to go into a phase that, you know, just because we're at 80%, I'm saying that this allows us the opportunity to come and ask you. It's always going to be up to you guys.
It's drought-specific right now, though.
Right, right.
I mean, it's not like we have droughts all the time. I mean, it was the combination of the drought, well being replaced, and these lines breaking that got us to where we are right now. I don't think this is going to happen all the time.
And we're going to get.
That phase, but no.
Yeah, and again, listen, to get us through this point, if you'll do this for me, we're going to update you twice a day, every day, even on the weekend. I'll send the mayor and everybody an email. I'll tell you what the levels are. I'll tell you how we're recovering. If we're not recovering, I'll tell you why we're not recovering. I'll give you all the information you need, and then we can revisit this next Tuesday or Wednesday online. You can, you can pull the band if we're, if we're back online and we're recovering nicely. You know, the tanks that we have in town, the elevated tanks are where all our storage is. And so when they're both down, trying to refill them both is just very, very difficult. You know, everything in physics, once you fall behind, it takes more and more to catch up. Now, once we catch up and we get to a point where we're turning the water over two or three feet and I have the ability, we're in the business of selling water. So I will not ask for anything. But I mean, I'm just asking for this relief during this time. And this will give us an opportunity, you know, for me to come in in the future if we run into a problem and say, look, you know, we need to look at this again. If we would have started Monday, and again, let me take all the blame for that, but if we would have started Monday, I would have asked for Phase Two Monday, you know, and I think that we would have limped along.
We're going to get to that, Jay. I think there's going to be some legal questions about jumping directly into a Phase Two or Phase Three, you know, as it comes to, you know, warnings and then fines and things such as that, because there has to be some kind of public education about that before you start, you know, handing out fines to people. So I think we're going to address that. And Lisa, you may, I don't know if you've received any information from the league about that, if it was, you know, if it was an emergency situation.
It was late this afternoon, and they said I needed the legal opinion, so Marcus is looking into that right now.
Okay. Yeah, but I think that we're going to, we're going to run into, you know, if it's, even if it's legally okay.
It's possible.
I don't know if it's okay by the council to start handing out fines for violations that people find out about.
I want to say this about that. We have a lot of educated people in our community. They realize that we're all in this together. If they hear from you that we need to do this, I think that they'll just do it. I'm not going to drive around in my car all day trying to pass out tickets. The point is, is, you know, if I could get, if I could get the majority of the people to agree this is a good thing, and they hear it from you, I think that we're on the road to recovery.
I definitely think Phase One is definitely doable right now, and I think that that'll hopefully solve the problem, but the others have to be advertised for a period of time. So let me, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Jim, I'm cutting you off.
No, no, I'm good.
Following up on something you said, yeah, I mean, assuming we needed to implement Phase Three right now, which it sounds like what you're telling us we do, you know, right now, we're at 100 capacity, 100% capacity with well eight offline.
Right.
And if we could get that back online, hopefully next week sometime.
Right.
That would put us back at around 90% capacity, give or take a little bit.
Okay, all right. So if I had eight back online, I could pump everything that we can pump, which will be about 9.1 or 9.2. That's our maximum capacity to pump to meet demand. Now, the demand would still be around 90%, but I would be at 100%. And that's where I need to be.
Yeah.
To overcome.
That's right. And no, we're agreeing with each other.
Okay.
I appreciate you clarifying that.
All right.
But my question is, and it plays into what Jack just said, is if we have the possibility and hope that we're going to be back with well eight next week, how long does it take for us to be able to implement Phase Three legally? I mean, we might have well eight back up before we can legally even impose Phase Three since we don't know that.
Well, let me say this, and I want to be very clear about this. Another day of this, and it's not going to matter. And now you're not going to use your irrigation anyway because it won't pop the heads.
I can't hear you, Jay. Could you speak a little?
I'm sorry. Another day of this, of losing water like we are now, it's going to come to a point where, you know, they're not going to, you're not going to use your irrigation because it's just not going to be usable. Most people won't get it. I mean, they called me this morning from Rock Creek, the backside of Rock Creek, and they were saying the irrigation wasn't working then. So it's, we're just going to run out of water. I don't know what the legal ramifications are, but I want to be very clear that we're not recovering at all. You know, as soon as I recover a foot and a half tonight, it'll be used up by 7 o'clock in the morning with people still irrigating and then calling me and complaining that they can't use their showers.
So we could roll out something like Phase Three, but just not implement the fines and the punishment until we've had some time to?
And I don't know what this is.
And just asking people to adhere to Phase Three, essentially?
I think that if you came out as, if we all came out as a group and you said today that we need everybody to stop using the irrigation, and I don't want to fine anybody. I think that the most of the, and if you're not comfortable right now with everything that's in that ordinance, let's, let's just do, if it's legal, let's just say, we're going to all say today that we're going to do a ban for seven days, and then we can look at this ordinance some more. Look, the fines mean nothing to me. You can, you know, we need people to agree that this is a problem, and we all need to be in this together.
Yeah, and Jay, just so I'm clear, I'm not trying to say we should or shouldn't do Phase Three. I just wanted for.
I understand.
The purposes of implementing it, want to make sure that we're doing something that we can, that we're, that we're following whatever rules we need to. I get what you're saying, and I agree with you. Sounds like we've got a real problem. I just want us to pick a solution.
Can I say something, Council President?
Yes.
If you adopt this tonight and the mayor signs it tomorrow, the quickest I can get it into the newspaper is May 27th, I think is what I looked up today. Unless we can find an emergency section in the code of Alabama that declares that we can post it in three spots, and then we could do that. But based on our population, I haven't found anything.
Right. But again, Lisa, you're kind of talking about what I was talking about, which is, which is when we can actually police this.
Exactly.
I think what Jay's saying is that, is if we as a group, you know, council and mayor come together and say we're requesting, essentially, at this point, it would be a request from the council to the citizenship. Here's our problem. We are implement, we're putting this in place to be, beginning to be enforced on the 27th, but we encourage everybody to start doing it right now because we've got a problem.
Well, and I don't even know that we could start on the 27th, because that's when, how long does it have to be advertised?
That's the publication date.
Oh, that is the publication date. Okay, it is the publication date. Okay. I thought you meant it would be advertising, and then you had to advertise it for a specific period of time.
Just that one day.
Is that, Jay, was what you're saying, Jay, did I say that right?
I think that's perfect.
Okay.
But could we say something a little bit stronger than we're requesting? We highly recommend or something?
Sure, we can do that.
Yes.
All right.
So before I go through some of these bullet points, and I promise I'm not going through all of them, does anybody have any other questions for Jay, Mr. What he said so far? I know we want to jump right into the middle, but I got to kind of give some talking. How long has well eight been an issue? Tuesday it just started?
Yeah, Tuesday. Well, Monday, I'm sorry, Monday, we found it was at 50%. You know, I want to thank all of you again because you had the generosity, all of you, the mayor and everybody had the generosity to allow me to put the contract together to get that replaced. It was already scheduled to be done this Wednesday. Actually, I had called them two weeks ago and said we need to push it back because of the drought, and they were still ready to do it. So they couldn't get here Wednesday, but they're going to be here tomorrow to start. If we hadn't done that, then this problem would be even larger than it is now because they would have to order the parts. And based on what we went through with well seven, we'd probably be down a month. So we're not going to be down a month. We're going to be down, hopefully, less than seven days.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'd kind of like to get back to this water break that we had. We were told on Monday that the water break was due to inferior material. I'm trying to find out, and I call that the question because I didn't think it was. I'd like to know what the water break was caused by.
It, it was laid, like that whole entire line is laid. When they backfilled it, Councilman Boone, they backfilled it with red clay. And the red clay got hard as concrete, and the internal pressure versus the external pressure put the pipe in an extreme bind and broke it. Now, when we break that on that 12-inch main, it's almost always. Our lead water operator, you know him personally, Curtis Cooper, was digging that job up, and with all that water, that ground was so hard, he broke all five teeth off that backhoe. And it was just in a heck of a bind. Now, I'm not, you know, Class 200 pipe is fine. We now require C-900 in pipe, but, but it was in a bind because even back then, our code and stated that you had to put it in either C1, C2, and C3. That's packing sand, that's silted sand, and that screened dirt. And none of that was done on this one. It was back in red clay. And you do this for a living, you know that that can't be good to put it right back in red clay. It just gets too hard, and it pushes and pushes and pushes on the pipe until it breaks. And every time it breaks, it always breaks in the hardest clay imaginable. Like I said, by the time we shut it off, there was tens of thousands of gallons on the ground, and the ground was still so hard that it broke those teeth on that backhoe.
So the material we're questioning, then, is the dirt backfill material, not the pipe material?
The way it was laid is the question, and it was done 20-plus years ago.
Right.
So.
But the material that was used was not what we had in for code.
The dirt material. The pipe material is fine.
The pipe was Class 200. I don't know when it was laid that that was the standard or not the standard. I know it's not the standard, what we have now, C-900.
Probably weren't even standard 20 years ago.
Yeah, 160.
Yeah.
You wouldn't use 160 anywhere.
No, you wouldn't use 160 anywhere now.
But the, I was confused on the, I thought we were referring to material as far as pipe material, Class 200.
The backfill material was the issue.
The Class 200 is accepted in Fairhope and Gulf Shores, which are pretty much the only two places it's accepted in the county.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions? Okay, I'm going to run through this. Purpose, I believe the purpose is pretty clear. Does anybody have any questions on the purpose or any comments? Want to change anything there? And then Article Two, Water Conservation Plan, gives a definition. You know, I did notice that in that second paragraph, it says, "A water shortage may exist in localized areas of City of Fairhope anytime the system demand is in excess of 85%." But we run into, but we go into Phase One when it exceeds 80%. Is that a typo in there? They're not, it's not consistent with the Phase One.
Right. So the Phase One being at 80% gives us the opportunity with experience to know that a problem's coming.
Gave you, gave you a little margin there.
Right.
Okay, so that was intentional.
Yes, it was.
I'm kind of picking on letters and words now. Okay, under Article Three, Water Conservation Response Options, I was fine with one and two. Under Bullet Three, and this is just kind of a comment, it talks about non-residential water use planning, because the highest percentage of water consumption is due to residential customers' implementation of water use restrictions for industrial and commercial customers is usually insignificant until the final stage of the drought or emergency. So with that, that in mind, non-residential water use planning, if you go, if you skip over, I'm going to go back to Phase, to Article Four. If you go to Article Five, Phase One Water Alert, voluntary, customers or persons who use City of Fairhope water system are requested to, and so on and so forth. Phase Two, all customers or persons who use City of Fairhope water system. So is the intent to impose the restrictions on, and I'm going to give you a list here I wrote down, on commercial users, golf courses, nurseries, the City of Fairhope, the City[1648.37] of Fairhope pool, none of those are addressed in here.
No, we would, and it may be an oversight when it was written, we won't, there is a part in there where we try to exempt some of the commercial places like car washes and...
No, that's in there. That's in there. When I say commercial, I mean like a, I mean like a bank that may be watering there, you know, may have an irrigation system at a, at a, at any kind of commercial or retail place of business.
You know, it's not my intention to do that. It's certainly not my intention to, you know, keep any business from trying to not only do what they need to do to get by, whether it's a nursery or whether, you know, they're trying to look nice, you know, when they, when people drive up to their property, you know.
It's about the percentage of use.
Right. And that's the largest percentage of use is going to be the residential irrigation, and that's what I wanted us to concentrate on.
Okay, so then we have to rewrite this because this says, "Customers or persons who use the City of Fairhope water system," and then in Phase 2, it says, "All customers or persons who use the City of Fairhope water system." Language has got to be changed in here or it pertains to everyone.
Yeah, I think that, you know, most of the golf courses that we have right now are not on our irrigation system, but I get your point, and I'm sorry I overlooked that.
And the city, and, you know, so I think maybe in that Article 5, in that first paragraph, somewhere it needs to say, "These responses do not apply to commercial slash retail, golf courses, nurseries."
I mean, we could say those are exempt.
Anybody see, see what I'm talking about? Marcus, you getting that?
Golf courses, nurseries.
I mean, we just straight do commercial, commercial businesses.
Commercial properties may include golf course and nursery, and do you want to include? We got a lot of money invested in our flowers in the city. Are we going to water our own flowers? Are we going to exempt ourselves and that?
I emailed you all about that.
I know, but it is not in here. I'm just trying to make sure we covered it.
Right. And I talked to the mayor about that specifically. I mean, you know, that people come here for that, you know, and it's a revenue stream.
But it's not in there?
Mm-mm. No.
Okay. Y'all have to change it because it's already been introduced.
Jack.
Well, let's get it to changes, then we may reintroduce the amended ordinance.
Could you, could you not just add, instead of amending the top paragraph, I mean, on Phase 1, it says, starts with customers, could you not just add residential to the front of that? And then get down to Phase 2, when it says all shall apply to all customers, could you just add residential in front of that? So all residential customers on the top and the bottom?
Well, in Phase 1, we might want to urge all customers to reduce, but it's, because Phase 1 is just urging, and then maybe Phase 2 and Phase 3 might be residential. Jay, what do you think about that? I know it complicates it a little bit, but you can ask, you can ask the commercial customers, or you could ask all customers to conserve.
Do we have any idea what the percentage of commercial versus residence? Because if you word it that way, the city wouldn't be included anyway. Do we have any idea?
We could sit here another two hours and debate who should and shouldn't be. I mean, we might as well just ask all citizens to turn your sprinklers off and conserve as much water as possible.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you asking, but then just go to Phase, but you go Phase 2 and 3 on the mandatory compliance sections, I think you have to say residential. I mean, I'm thinking if you're a nursery, you might go out of business if you can't, and if you say all persons that use it, I mean, that's what it says, that would include us?
Well, my point is, we just need to ask everybody to conserve water because if it can't be advertised until the end of May, well, eight's going to be back up, and hopefully we'll be able to just continue to ask people to conserve water rather than worrying about Phase 2 and 3 because you can't enforce Phase 2 or 3 until it's publicized, right?
Yeah. I think this ordinance, we got to get the language, you know. I think it's worth, we're not going to spend all day on it, but I think it's worth arguing it and getting it right. I think all, I think Phase 1 should be all, and then you just put the words like Jay said on Phase 2 and 3, residential handles it.
Council President, it's Mike Allison.
Yeah, I asked him to, he's, he's on the line, Mike.
Hi, Council President, it's Mike Allison. I agree with you. On Phase 2 and 3, when I was kind of looking at this again today, and I probably don't know, maybe Jay knows a good time, I think if we're going to limit the water, watering to certain days for residential, do we want to limit the amount of time per zone? That's fairly common in these ordinances. And then also, do we want to address, yes, I agree with you, that commercial and things like that for Phase 2s and 3s, but what about like quasi-residential, like subdivisions watering their right-of-ways?
Yeah, the quasi subdivisions, I think that the homeowners associations are usually, aren't they usually tax-free corporations or incorporated? I believe, I believe they are.
Yeah, but do we want to say not to water?
HOAs, CLAs are corporations. I think they would, yeah, that's tough. I mean, that's a tough one because they would fall under Phase 2 and 3.
Correct.
No, I'm sorry, they, I'm sorry, they would not fall under Phase 2 and 3.
Correct.
Yeah, I think that would be, I think that would be the best way to do it then. So they would be able to water their entrance to, say, Rock Creek.
The question comes up, again, I don't know how you solve it with human nature being human nature, but when some people are using it and some aren't, or not able to, it comes to a question of what they're going to use, I'm going to use. And you can only hope that the fact that people understand the severity of this problem, but, you know, it's not a function of who can use it, it's a function of if you don't have to use it, don't use it.
Well, that, that'd be covered in Phase 1.
Right.
But if it's truly that the commercial customers are a small percentage, which it says under Bullet 3, under, 3, it's, they're saying it's basically insignificant. And that's what Bullet 3 says.
It's really a moot point, though, in the fact that, the problem is, if they're going to do it, if they're going to be, and do it the wrong way, and, you know, it's going to just hurt the City of Fairhope, and there's not much, you know, you can do about it. But we do need to offer this, you know, this in, as best we can, that does need to be in place. I do feel in the best way that we can get it, that we do support some type of management of the order. So now I'm arguing against myself basically.
You lost me, Kevin. So what are you, what are you, what are you trying to say then? You want to, are you trying to say you don't want to distinguish between anybody?
No, no, I'm not saying that. I am not saying that.
You're saying human nature, man.
That's what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, we can distinguish it all we want, human nature being human nature.
Oh, yeah.
People want to do it.
Well, that's true.
But the point of it is, we do need something in place.
Right.
People want to do it, they're going to do it anyway, you just have to deal with it.
Right.
But we do need something in place, and we need it written as best as we can.
Right, right.
That's what I'm saying, actually, I'm arguing myself up here, wasting a lot of time, to be quite honest with you. But it is, you know, it's just a thought process you keep running through while we're up here looking at all this.
Right. I would, while I'm going through these bullets, we're really almost, you know, kind of through these, these quick points I wanted to hit. The, no irrigation performed between hours of 5:00 a.m. and 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. and 9:00 p.m., and I understand that's peak, peak usage times. At the same time, it's also when people do their irrigating because it doesn't burn their plants up. And so, you know, if you do it between, and two points I will make you, if you do it between 9:00 a.m. and P., and 9:00, 5., I'm, 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m., you got the highest chance of burning your yard up, burning your plants up. So you force some people to do it at a risky time. And the other point on that, that bullet about no watering allowed on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, well, if you don't have a sprinkler system that's automated and you have to go out there and manually move your sprinklers around, or you have to use a hose, and you can't do it between 9:00 a.m., you can only do it between 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m., but you work 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and you can't do it Saturday and Sunday, well, you can't ever water your yard unless you have an automatic sprinkler system. It is, see?
You're getting back to my point. If we make this so confusing, somebody can't read this and just determine whether or not they're supposed to be using water, we just need to ask people to conserve water as much as possible. And if they don't, then start, I don't know what you do, start arresting people, but if we make this ordinance so, so convoluted and hard to understand, it, it's not going to serve its purpose.
I think the majority of people will go on what you guys say, what the mayor and you say. I think that they'll respond to it. Look, I, you know, this is an extreme circumstance, I get it, but, you know, I think that there's enough people, enough customers out there that understand what we're going through and actually feeling the effects of it. So I'm hoping that, you know, cooler heads, you know, if you, I really feel comfortable saying that if this group stands up and says, we've got to conserve water, we're running out of water, and, you know, we're worried about fire protection system, I think that the large majority of people, you know, we could talk to, I know the president of the homeowners association at Rock Creek and one at Quail Creek, and we could talk to them, and maybe they can, you know, try to shame people into not doing it as much. I mean, there's some that, you know, in my neighborhood that water three times a day, every day, and, you know, they do it when it rains. I mean, it's, they don't care, you know, but they, but we do have to do everything we can today to try to get this under control before, you know, it's much worse.
Jay, I don't want to cut you off, but I got, I still got a whole lot of points here to go through on this. And I know it's kind of getting into weeds, which you're saying you're getting into weeds here, Robert, and it doesn't, doesn't do any good, but there is some things we could clean up. On Page 3, that first bullet, Washington private vehicles, it says prohibited except on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, no vehicles may be washed on Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Well, why not just say Washington private vehicles is prohibited on Friday, Saturday, Sunday? That says something. I mean, I'm just pointing out a few things that make some simple, and then on Phase, let me back up. Phase 2, the last sentence under that first paragraph, Phase 2, it says, "Restrictions will be in effect until lifted by the governing body or until demand averages at or below." It says 80% of capacity for seven consecutive days. Would that not be 90% for second consecutive days, and then it would go back to a Phase 1? And then also at the end of Phase 3, "Restrictions will be in effect until lifted by the governing body or until demand averages at or below." It says 90% for seven consecutive days. Should that be 100% for seven consecutive days?
Correct.
Yeah. I mean, Marcus thinks it should be the 90 and 100 respectively, it just goes back to the previous phase. Otherwise, we may never go back to Phase 1. I don't, I don't know.
Well, I didn't, when we put this together, I didn't want it to all be automatic. You know, I thought that I could call you, email you guys and say, hey, we're fine, you know, you can lift the ban. Again, we're in the business of selling water. I don't want the, I don't want it to go on and on. I just want to get through these rough patches, and that, that's why we put this together, just to try to get us through the roughest patch.
No, I understand, and I'm just trying to get an ordinance that, that when we do vote on it, that it's as, as, as good as we can make it in a reasonable amount of time. So bear with us on a few of these changes.
No problem.
Marcus, last point I wanted to make was, if you saw the draft that was introduced Monday night, there were some fines in there for second offense, third offense, fourth offense. And Marcus, you want to take over on Items 6, or Article 6 under violations?
Yeah, Council President, I think that the way that that was worded, the only, the only authorities to issue citations for municipal ordinance violations are code enforcement officials and, and the police department. And that allowed, that, the way that was worded allowed, you know, somebody from the water department to do that. I believe we're already covered with our Fairhope Ordinance Code, Section 1-8, which basically provides penalties and imposes, could impose jail sentences if you, if the court would be so inclined, but I doubt it would be. It's up to a $500 fine for each occurrence, zero to $500. And it also offers some mode of, it gives somebody just due process, it gives them a right to say, hey, I wasn't watering on this day, I know we weren't in a violation, we weren't in a state of emergency or whatnot, it just, it gives them that due process right. And also, it gives somebody, say, for example, if they've got, you know, a child or something else of that nature, and they've got to have water, they can't have water cut off, it doesn't, kind of give that draconian right to the water department to go in and just shut off the valve and lock it up without those due process procedures in place that the court system offers. And so what we did, we took that out and we inserted what's already in our books, which is Code Section 1-8, which allows those penalty provisions to be in place for repeat violations too.
Okay. So, Council, let me see if I can summarize this, and then we will probably ask for another Under the Phase 1 Water Alert, voluntary, it had the word all customers or persons. And then the last sentence, another sentence would be added, let's see here, "No emergency declaration is required to implement Phase 1," or "No emergency declaration by the governing body is required to implement Phase 1." That could take effect immediately. Under Phase 2, mandatory compliance, it would say, "The following restriction, restrictions shall apply to all residential customers." Anybody want to tweak any of those days or times? I know I brought it up, but I just, I brought it up for discussion. I know it gets into weeds. Change on Page 3, under Washington private vehicles, is prohibited on Friday, Saturday, And then, oh, also on Phase 3, I'm sorry, go back, it says, "The following restrictions shall be imposed in place of Phase 2 restrictions to..."
All residential?
All residential. And I believe the other, let's see, under Phase 2, the, under Phase 2, the 80% on the fourth, fifth line should be 90%. And the last paragraph under Phase 3, the 90% should read 100%. Is that right?
That's correct.
Correct.
I think that's it.
I just found them.
The last two parts.
Okay, so under Phase 2, on the fifth line, where it says, "Until demand averages at or below 80% for seven consecutive days," that should say 90%.
Okay.
Yes, basically, you'd fall back to the Phase 1.
I'm with you.
And then on that Phase 3, the last small paragraph there where it said averages at or below 90%, should say averages out to 100%. So if it goes to below 100% for seven consecutive days, you still are falling back to...
Phase 2.
Phase 2.
Council President, do you need the bullet point for commercial car washes and service stations on that Phase 3 since you took out?
I'd leave it in there just because it clarifies, it's a little bit repetitive now.
Okay.
It's a good point, but...
I just sent something to you, Marcus, and y'all, but this is a sample ordinance from a DECA, and it mentions new lawns are exempt for 30 days. New lawns.
Oh.
I mean, that's just something else. I'm just only looking for it because it just seems like we can make this standard, but I just emailed it. That's one that I saw that was...
Yeah, that's a good point, new lawns. We need that exemption. That's a lot of money to be wasted if you're not watering it.
And we would probably be liable for that.
I agree with that. Y'all agree with that?
Yep.
Y'all agree with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so back to, that would just be Phase 2 and Phase 3. Where would that sentence best to go? You might just put it under, above the first, let's see, I'm sorry. Maybe have a sentence under that first paragraph that says, just take that again, Mayor.
New lawns are exempt for 30 days. The first 30 days.
Yeah.
That they're late, I guess, planted.
Planted, yeah. New lawns, would that be, new lawns and landscape are exempted for the first 30 days?
I can get this printed real quick and bring it in.
Yeah, it says new lawns and landscaping exempt.
Yeah, new lawns, and I would think it would say, new lawns and landscaping would be exempt for the first 30 days after planting. Put that in there under the...
What's the definition of a new lawn?
Oh, new laws.
How old does a lawn have to be before it's not new?
Newly planted.
First 30 days.
Yeah. You could say newly planted lawns.
First 30 days of...
No, you're exempted for the first 30 days, but how long does it have to be planted?
Yeah, it would be the first 30 days of planting, so they're exempt for two weeks if they planted it two weeks ago.
Yeah, so first 30 days after installation.
Say they're exempted for the first 30 days after planting.
And then it does have requests to water them at night, and then this proposal, of course, that kind of goes against the hours that Jay was talking about.
Yeah.
Four to 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 a.m. is what it says.
I think we could cover it with new, new lawns and landscaping will be exempted for 30 days from the date of planting. Anything else? Do you see anything else in there, Jimmy?
Now, this has exempted only, they can only water two days a week for the first 30 days in this sample ordinance. I think the point, you know, what Robert was saying earlier, I mean, if we're at 100% capacity and we're going to be out of water, then...
We'll be out of water by the time we get out of this meeting.
Yeah, I mean, people, people just need to scale back, let us get caught up.
Take the COVID signs and put water shortage on them and stick them in around town in front of subdivisions, and people will call in and say, what's the deal? And tell them, stop watering.
Yeah, well, we're going to make a statement here soon. Well, let's get something going so we can get a statement out. I think we're good. Any other edits? Somebody want to introduce that amended ordinance? Somebody want to introduce that amended ordinance?
I'll introduce it.
Okay, it's been introduced. Clerk, are you comfortable?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for immediate consideration.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second for immediate consideration. Clerk, will you call the question?
Council President?
Aye.
Place 2?
Aye.
Place 3?
Aye.
Aye.
Place 4?
Aye.
Place 5?
Aye.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for final adoption.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. One question, Jay, you had been concerned with, you know, fines, I hate to bring this up now, but you've been concerned with fines, you know, people are out of work, people are hurting from the COVID-19. Is it even possible to suspend with that portion for a period of time? Did you want to even discuss that?
Well, because I, I don't know because the fines and the setup of punishment is so different than what it was in the proposal, the proposed ordinance, and because it won't necessarily be enforceable for several weeks, I don't know. And, and hopefully in those several weeks, we'll be out of Phase 3.
Okay.
So I don't know that it's even an issue at this point.
I wanted to give you an opportunity to address that.
Yeah, I mean, looking at the fines that were in the original proposal, fining people, disconnecting their water and fining them $500, you know, after their second strike, and disconnecting after strike 1 seemed a little extreme to me. Disconnecting anybody's water, you know, during this time-
I had that circled.
But, but it sounds like we've remedied that, so I don't think that's an issue at this point.
Okay. Any other comments?
How does the word get out, what particular phase you're in on a particular day?
We're gonna announce, depending on how this vote goes here, in just about 10 seconds, Phase 1. We could do that, ask people, nothing stops us from asking people to conserve water right now, and we're gonna maybe make an announcement, and we're gonna go over here to Brianna, and we're gonna go to these other media outlets and ask us, give us a voice. So Clerk, will you call the question, please?
Council President?
Aye.
Place 2?
Aye.
Place 3?
Aye.
Place 4?
Nay.
Place 5?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. All right, that concludes our business. I guess before I ask for a motion for adjournment, I would, I would like to make an announcement to the city's residents, if you are on the City of Fairhope water system, to please conserve water beginning immediately. I'd ask you to please stop irrigating unless you have a new lawn or new landscaping, and ask you to help us get through this time. Hopefully, we'll get a little rain soon, and we'll get the well 8 back online as soon as the first of next week, and we can relax us a little bit. So, does anybody else want to make any comments? Mayor, do you want to make any comments on that? I think a strong statement from you may be in order.
I think this is great. I think it's just a good policy anyway. We, we're not gonna have to use this much. I can't remember, I mean, there are a few times, maybe every couple of years, but I think it's a good policy, and it, and it looks like a lot of cities in Alabama have something similar, so.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, we're adjourned, thank you.